...with liberty and justice for all.
Has every member of the council had a chance to review the whole minutes?
Yes.
Should be a part of your package.
Uh, yeah, I need to fix a couple of them. Is that what you're gonna point out? Um, the, and the city administrators reported left out where the library went. It was going over twenty-seven hours a week. It was like, oh, we did, we did, it was in the meeting. Oh, yeah.
And there was an emotional...
No, no one.
I think that would probably kind of get it to the guy in my ear.
Yeah, it would, yes, okay.
After reviewing, uh, are there any additions or additions?
I move that we accept the move.
We're motioning on the floor to accept, and a second. Any further discussion? Same none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, same sign, motion period. All right, we'll move on into the new business. First item on the new business would be the approval of bills that, uh, we... I better not say it. Uh, so, uh, we're in the process of getting that done. So, uh, have you had a chance to review the bills, list of bills before?
This car is a farming home backpack drawer, going out there ninety times.
Fire, is that the fire trunk?
Fire.
What, is this, what kind of floor?
Uh, just a big backpack drawer, like a leaf drawer, two small brush racks.
We thought they had one for...
No, it's a big, it was an issue I had the other day.
And free employment, physicals, four hundred and twenty thousand.
Free employment on our last two police officer hires.
RPCS importers.
Ramies.
This one?
It's Ramies.
Oh, Ramies. This information acknowledges additional contributions to bill.
Uh, that's another, uh, our computer program that we keep our records program where the police sit in the apartment. We get an additional. Since we've got computers in the cars now, we needed one more at computer trouble.
And John's been around far too many times. That, 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 so that, is that just that?
It says the area foul. Does the area...
That is the valves, the valves, um...
Uh, probably, it's right on the area of the chart, there's definitely something out of it.
This book's eight hundred forty dollars.
What, what was the company?
Uh, Book Systems. No, it's not, eight hundred forty dollars.
They'll say automation fee or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's some type of, I'd have to look it up.
Robert's up front, I'm running this.
It's an, yeah, it's an annual fee that we pay.
And telling books five hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing from them, is some reading program.
I see some program, oh, yeah, so.
What do you have to some do up here?
Do you have a question?
Again, I don't make a motion, we accept the, uh, proof of bill.
We have a second on the floor to accept the bills as presented and pay, uh, pay the bills, or your second?
My second.
No, Jim did.
Jim.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? Same none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, same sign, motion period. Move on down to this part of our agenda that says citizens' comments. If you are in the audience and you have comments bring before your council, this is your time. Uh, what I'd like for you to do is come and, uh, to the mic to phone that we have here and state your name and your purpose and try to contain your comment to three minutes if possible for the those that wish to be recognized. Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Appreciate you letting me, uh, come here and speak to you to say my request. Uh, between Steel Street and Highway sixty, there's a waterway and it is backed up. It's, it's, uh, it's just plugged up, needs to be dug out. Uh, but the, but the clogs that has it backs the water up all the way to, uh, West Clinton Street there by the railroad tracks. It'd be great help if we could get a, a track hole or something there to, to relieve that. So, that's my first request.
Okay, that is the bottleneck, and I've been down there in big rain and we do have a bottleneck right there and brush will indeed flow water down that street here.
So, we had to clean it down.
It would expedite things, I think.
Anthony, you mentioned it to me earlier, and last rain we had, I looked at that. Do you think that it would be, just your opinion, to, to dig that out and then to concrete it?
I would think it would help.
It would do some help with the flow.
Yeah, because it just fills in.
It'll hang up in there.
It does, it just fills in on itself, just caves in.
Yeah.
So, and then, like I said, it backs up all the way to West Clinton, shit there by the tracks. So, I think it'd be, help relieve both sides of the road.
Okay.
So, that's my first request. And then, uh, my second request is, uh, I'd like to ask for, uh, uh, a ban on any temporary fireworks stands, tents, or buildings to be allowed inside the city limits. Uh, also, that, uh, no person or business can be allowed to purchase an existing building or wreck a new building for the purpose of selling or distributing fireworks inside the city limits of Seymour. Uh, with the exception, personal or business, uh, meets all the state Missouri and city of Seymour codes. Uh, business will be maintained and open to the public, then for forty hours per week, year-round. Uh, they should have sprinkler system and firewalls, uh, like I have with my facility. Looked at me codes and see codes. So, I'd like to ask the council to, uh, take that into consideration. Uh, there is another fireworks going there by McDonald's, I'd ask you to grandfather that building in as well as my own. So, I wouldn't be mean to anybody, but I would ask for, for some codes to, uh, be met if there was new business, concerning fireworks.
Well, you're just asking, yeah, and I understand that, you know, you're just asking that they should, if they're gonna be here stationary, they should have all, be all up to the codes and the sprinkler systems and everything, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't we currently have something like that on our books?
I'm, I'd have to look, I can get the answer, I'd have to look.
Whenever I built that building out there, there was no codes, but we go with the fire marshal. Like I said, we exceeded all the codes that run the books at that time. Uh, and brought in, you know, expensive sprinkler systems and firewalls and doors and everything to do business and we keep doors open and, uh, temporary stands coming in and out of town. I'd like to keep those, those guys out.
So, since you're asking us to do what other towns do, I know a lot of the towns do do this.
Yes.
So, so if someone had come in building, building like here, ears and meet all the codes, I could see what you would propose.
I don't oppose that.
Well, no, I think, no, I think, this is fair, I just want to be fair.
I'm asking for anything that I have done myself.
Right, right.
And I'm not asking to be hard on the people that, with my competitors down the road and to grandfather them then. So, they didn't ask me to ask you that, just for myself.
And I think Mr. Kelly just asked me for nothing more than what he's done already. Make sure that any, uh, fireworks companies that would come in would meet the same standards he's had.
But that's only one of the things.
Uh, some builds are state standards, uh, American fireworks codes, uh, standards, American fireworks standards. Other state standards are fire marshal standards. There's a lot of codes and regulations when you start talking about fireworks. And, uh, that's why we met and exceeded those with the firewalls, the fire regular doors, the steel studs throughout the building and the sprinkler system in all buildings that we have fireworks in.
Paul, if we want to take action on this, would we need to do this in the form of our ordinance?
Well, I don't, I, well, I don't know what ordinance we have on fireworks currently, but I mean, generally speaking, I think all this brought up is somebody'd have to come in, if they wanted to bring a fireworks thing anywhere, they'd have to ask for a building permit or a business license and that would cause the codes to be looked at. And if they don't meet codes, they wouldn't be issued the license. I, I don't, I guess I don't know that there's anything that's already on books. I ain't calling Mr. Kelly saying just follow your own ordinances and state law and don't give somebody a business license or a temporary business license if they don't meet the standards that are already in place.
There are no codes.
There are, there are, there are, there are, there are.
I'm just having to look, huh? There's never come up.
If there's no codes, then we would, we would need to bring back an ordinance with codes if that's what the board wants. Uh, generally, most cities don't allow those temporary stands in their city limits. That's why you see them out on highways outside and out in counties all over the place. So, I mean, it's a pretty standard pass. If there's not any codes in the book, then we would need to obviously draft them to limit people's ability to do it without being code.
When was the last time that there was a can put up in state limits? You know?
You might have no idea. I can't tell.
No, 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 again, I was a kid that were everywhere. I was a kid that were everywhere, but I don't recall, I don't remember the last time that there was, you know, in state limits.
I guess I would ask then, if, if there hasn't been one in years, is there some undercurrent that one is coming? I mean, what, what's caused it?
Well, I, 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 I would say that was, is if, if there hasn't been one in the city limits for years, what's the...
Well, what I'm saying is...
Well, there's no undercurrent, everything's above board. But all I'm saying is I've invested here in city Seymour. I've made certain codes and I was asking anybody else to meet those codes and I believe that can be fair. Nothing that I've said here to ask you, I think is unfair to anyone.
No, we, I think I speak for all of us, say, we sure appreciate your investment in our community and we've got a lot of money invested out there and providing year-round jobs for people in our community and we appreciate that. Paul, can, do, do we need a motion to do this, to proceed forward with sort of...
I mean, Sam and I will look up the codes and, and create them and bring it to a future meeting, uh, to deal with fireworks and firework codes. I mean, if you want to make a motion to direct us to...
I would, I'd like to make a motion to direct us to proceed to, uh, essentially, uh, satisfy the request Mr. Kelly's made last night. I did, so, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion? Now, the, the motion is for you guys to look and, uh, and...
I assume something to this where these sort of suggested we be, because I don't think there's any disagreement for me to do that, right?
I also have in that line, I'd like to, you mean, if that's all right, maybe you can pass that down and you guys can take a look at that and that's just, kind of covers what I just asked. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for coming. Sam, we have a motion on, on the floor in a second, you need to bring that to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, same sign, motion period.
To go back real quickly before we leave this discussion for Mr. Kelly, um, Pud's here. That's kind of our water guy, a little jack of all trades, but do you know the, that ditch that, that, that Mr. Kelly's talking about? Do you have kind of a plan for that Pud? Does there anything come to mind in terms of what we can do? For Chuck, one of the two of you?
Yeah, I've been out there and looked at it, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. Definitely need to be brushed off, I think that would help, if you're in there cleaning it out, but, but something like what you suggested, you want to invest that money, that'd be great, I think that works really well. But the flow of water, the brushing there, probably, it's why it'd be a pretty good size.
I, I, I can kind of figure that. Now, the thing that catches me is it's causing a very large water problem, uh, through a, a span of a quarter mile almost. I mean, it's going, it's, it's coming out deep in sixty and then it butts against another water problem we have on the other side of the tracks. It's all in that same valley. Yeah. That would be a starting point, because it's the natural flow than to go across the highway?
Yeah, it's the natural flow. Yeah, across the highway, it always has been for the last twenty years since we've had the problem.
Well, I mean, the flow is north even from the other side of the tracks. We could kind of come up with a plan that would address the whole, this schematic.
The only people to help keep that, uh, the highway there in Steel Street from growing, that, that water is very disruptive. Like, or anything, though, we'd have to get some permission from state. Be tied by a four meter dam.
Well, from that angle, I guess, go for you, Sam, but maybe can you get these guys going forward looking at a little bit weird?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You're talking about the water that comes under the railroad track out here and then goes across Anthony's property all the way across. See, that's what we talked about when we did this Karen Circle down here. It was always supposed to be go across the...
Uh-huh, right.
But we ran into problems with getting people, you didn't own that property at the time, I believe, that's right?
No, it was a harm to children's...
Harm to children's and we had problems getting permission and everything else and it just kind of died. Yeah, that was the plan all along, was for that water to go down that Karen Circle ditch and shoot under the railroad tracks and go all the way to the other side of the highway.
Well, last week we were talking about that, that Ron Carthaus went developing houses on a dome, I think he forgot what was done and, and there's a water problem there. We had a resident who lived in, in Chesterdale Estates who was noting there's water. So, I think this might fix the whole thing if we can come up with a...
Well, when you get too much rain, you're not gonna be able to get it that big enough that the water can flow through there.
Right.
You're, you're always gonna have a water problem.
You might need a water retention basin.
Yeah.
Mr. Ann, on the north side of sixty, it's all brushed up too. I mean, over here didn't have nowhere to go over there.
Right.
That's far out there on the north side of sixty, here, going down.
That, uh, private, private, yes, uh, same, right. Right. And I think what we'd get into there, council, is private property in cities, involvement on private property to, to utilize that to our most greatest benefit. But we need to look into that, I guess, from a...
I think with, if we had landowner consent, if it, if it ultimately was solving the city problem, being water retention that's overflowing our streets and causing damage, um, to homeowners and, and then I, I don't, I don't think that would be an unjustifiable extent. And, I mean, we would take the property over, but to clear out some brush, I don't, with the consent of landowners.
That, that's true.
Is their consent, you wouldn't want to, I, they're probably not gonna consent if they think that you're clearing everything out to just flood their property.
That is true, but...
If their water, if their water gets brushed while brushed, then...
But we're, but the city is responsible for the water that we moved that way for the damage that it does on their property. We're responsible for what happens downstream. Or any building permits that we permitted in a flood area, a trail.
I've got a water line that goes across from east to west on the other side, so we've got something there.
I mean, a drainage yard.
No, we've got a water line that goes up to the bridge, so it's mainly runs up to the bridge.
So, prior to that, some leases.
Right.
Okay.
Well, there's another problem we've looked at already in, uh, Charlie, this year, the chairman of our planning and development committee, and we've looked at that, uh, Charlie, have we done any more work on that?
No.
No more work, but there possibly would have to be a water retention basin, uh, designed for gradually letting that water out so that that water comes across, uh, so it doesn't flood out in Steel Street and evenly goes out to the... But I'm talking about on the, uh, other side of railroad tracks, but anyway, that's an engineering problem, I'm sure. But that, uh, cleaning out of, uh, of that tributary there, uh, probably could be done maybe with a permission D and O. Any other questions come?
So, what we're going to do is we're going to have Chuck and Pud look at this and we'll address it. Let's address, let's, let's address it next, maybe, yes. I, I don't like doing vagaries and we're gonna do it and whenever, our time is on that.
We'll have something for you, eventually.
Perfect, thank you, Sam.
Okay.
All right, uh, other things we wish to ask the council? Yes, would you come forward to the mic, please, and state your name, your purpose?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Frisar Raspras and I have a couple of things I want to ask about. I went into the last council meeting, but I did listen to it and, um, I know the library thing, is that kind of a moot point tonight? Y'all don't vote on it, I guess, or something? Or can we discuss that? The hours at the library?
Any question you wish to ask?
I'm, I'm just concerned about the hours at the library. I think they're being cut down to forty-nine?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, and, uh, you know, I was wondering if it would be feasible to make it like thirty or thirty-five hours a week and maybe leave it closed on Saturday and Monday, because there are a lot of people. I know there's a lot, there are times you can go in there, there's nobody in there, you can go in there, there's two or three, but there are a lot of people that use that library, whether checking out books. I go in there every time I travel, which is fairly often, get audio books. Uh, I know the kids are on the computers and, and I think it was brought up at the last meeting that they can maybe use the school computers, but, um, I don't know, it, you know, it, it just doesn't seem fair for one thing, I guess, and, uh, and I hate to see the librarian's hours cut to forty, uh, which, as far as I know, would really hurt benefits, I think, yes. But anyway, but my concern is just hours and, uh, that maybe they be more than twenty-seven hours a week.
Very good, uh, has any member of the council, would you like to address that?
I will.
Yes.
Um, we just had a conversation in closed session with the auditors today, the next meeting, and, uh, without giving too many details, I mean, this topic came up and this was a fund that she specifically, uh, the state auditors pointed out as being a deficit fund, one that, uh, per statute were in violation of, uh, right, uh, because of the expenses of the library outweigh the income to the library. Um, you know, honestly, short of us, uh, floating a, a sales tax to the public, uh, voters would approve. Well, we've got a, a very limited, finite budget to, to operate the library with and that includes the Blaine Children's, uh, annual contribution from that, from that trust essentially, which is about seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars a year. They're just, um, uh, quite frankly, the money coming into the library via taxes and Blaine Children's, like, that's even covered the whole benefit cost of the con library. That's just the poor reality of it. And, um, also studied recently, I think, have kind of been usage rates, um, uh, I know, Sam, you, didn't you do a statistical survey of Saturdays?
We, we did, I just mainly just talked to Bill Horson and Joy.
And how many people we have this?
Really, but, I mean, like, four people.
Total?
Total.
Over three Saturdays?
Over a couple of Saturdays and so it's just not feasible to keep that.
Here's where we're at, uh, this Raspras Day. We unfortunately are, are, are looking at, at several different fund areas in the city that we've got to, um, we've got to create some reform and make some cost cuts. And it's all the same, we have to kind of decide what services are the most necessary and what's on. And, um, and, and library isn't the only one, uh, it's gonna be, because we put the budget process, it'll be a lot of, honestly.
I, I understand, yeah, that's why I was just thinking, you know, Saturday and, and Monday, make those three days out.
Right.
And, and I think there was something said at the last meeting about, uh, the, the hours per day was gonna be nine hours a day, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, dropping that to eight hours a day, four days a week.
Well, again, that's pushing hours up and that's what we really have to watch is, 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 I, I, you know, the initial suggestion was only twenty hours a week and I think we sort of compromised going to twenty-seven and that, that's really, I don't even know how we make twenty-seven there financially, but...
Well, that's my question's on it, I mean, you know, what happens, happens.
Yeah.
Uh, my other topic was straight off to the city, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot of them. Um, I know there's a lot on my street, there's one, one that, the folks live on Anderson Street. When that dog was up there, they cannot catch that dog, they go out there and holler at him, they can't catch him. And, uh, he's, and he's terrorizing people, basically. He's, he's chased him in into the back of another man's pit, that's right. He's chased myself and my granddaughter on bicycles, uh, he's chased others and he's aggressive.
Is that a white dog?
It's black and white, yeah.
A couple of dogs.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I was talking, and then there's a couple of other dogs over from over on Hyde Street that come, they're over, well, come over to Anderson, they roam in the neighborhoods and, uh, you know, they stay like, like, people, they got sheds and stuff and chasing rabbits down in there and stuff like that. Um, they're coming over and, you know, some of us that have dogs that we keep on laces, you know, uh, still, we got a careful to go out and, and watch for these dogs. And, and I saw, it was back last fall, but I was down driving around on Water Street and, um, what's that, East West Street down on, uh, Washington, I think? And, um, I saw a dog that was pilfering garbage and he had a leash on, but he was a stray and couldn't catch him. I didn't know what to do, but go over to the police station and there was an officer in there and he was on the phone at the time, slow weighted. And, uh, he said, well, he was just too busy, nothing he could do about it. So, here's this dog running around with the leash on, it could get choked or hurt somehow, you know, so, but, and that's okay. I know he was busy, but where do you go, who do you call?
What kind of a dog catcher?
Well, you know, here, here's the best dog catcher guy, but, and he, if he's not fast enough, gets that, uh, black and white, uh, Nalder or whatever it is.
Well, his name's Nixon, if you won't call him, his name's Nixon, so.
Well, actually, we got a call about that dog tonight, Lance is gonna be talking to the owner. Pile's over, he, he's looking for the dog.
Yeah.
Tonight. Uh, I've done Lance, so I think they've got a plan to try to trap the dog if they can't get it caught soon.
Okay, 'cause I know, I'm down at the industry, he's been down sports line handles. He goes, he goes clear up to the end, it's what senior townhouses are and, and, you know, those ladies, they get out there and walk their dogs on leashes, but, uh, they don't need, need a dog that's terrorizing neighborhood and that's aggressive.
Yeah, Lance and I chased that dog the other night. There, there's no catch.
I don't know, there was about half a dozen of us chasing the dog, probably, Sunlight Street one night here, a couple, no, never did catch that.
But anyway, that's what I got, so, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Uh, maybe, maybe we need to get Mr. Yeats on the phone, I think he's the fastest one to get off all the city right now. All right, thank you for your comments, your questions, and address your counsel. Uh, any other questions, comments, or people who want to address remarks to the city council? Please raise your hand and I'll recognize you.
Please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Seeing none? Appreciate your candid remarks. All right, we have bid open. Uh, I don't know, I think it's our city clerk that has that. And that's for mowing area, we, we solicit bids for mowing the cemetery every year, year. So lately, if you could open that and tell us what we're getting. How many bids do we have?
No, I'm sorry, what?
How many bids do we have?
Two bids. First one, moss and lawn service for nine fifty a mowing and price center cutting for nine thirty a mowing.
I've got a question. Whoever gets it, are they gonna mow it themselves or are they farming it out for someone else to mow?
Good question. Are they right here tonight?
One of us here. We'll come up here, okay?
Uh, if you would come to the microphone, please, sir, and hold the figure on.
Cause last year it was pretty, pretty soft.
We had some problems last year with trimming around the gravestone seminar, I went out there after one, uh, company pointed out to me that they had done their complete job and we went out and looked, turned up. It needed some additional work.
So are you guys gonna mow it or are you guys gonna have school kids or something to mow?
Tell, tell us where you are.
My name is Caleb Carroll, um, I'm from the price center cutting, all that stuff. Uh, this year, over the past two years, we're starting our business and as you guys know, budgets are really tight. And, you know, that thing is, I'm not making any excuses, that thing's a monster and it's, it's tough. And the first couple of years, we had, had some teenage help for us, we just, two people, it's just, it's tough, I mean, it's just, it's tough. And, uh, last year, the first year, I, I won't lie, the first year was tough, this first year of our business. Each year we bought more advanced equipment to help us, this year we have bought, it's called an advanced chute system. It will virtually block all grass from hitting headstones. Which in return, once that is done, we also will go through and we are going to be extremely strict. People are in this year. I mean, sometimes, sometimes a little bit gets messed, but seriously, we, I mean, there's a lot of headstones, we really tried to get every headstone. Sometimes I know the spot gets messed, but I mean, we, we really tried. This year, we've actually gained enough properties. We have hired our first full-time employee that will be held completely responsible if anything is not done. If anything is not done, like I said, he will be held responsible. If we get one more property like the Seymour Cemetery, we will have another full-time employee that their sole responsibility is to mow. They will hold any employee that is there responsible to make sure all mowing is done properly and weeding is done properly. If that is not done properly, they will be handled through us, they won't be asked back to help again. If it is needed, because me and Chad is very involved with the YMCA, I have another business with my wife. If it is needed that we be there every time that it is mowed, I will be there every time that it is mowed. We greatly appreciate the city of Seymour's faith in us. We, when we do employ people, we employ from here and I know that all that money in return gets spent on the Seymour community. Um, I know in years past, sometimes there's been some mistakes, but every year that we get further along, we learn more and we honestly do our best to do a better job. So I just, and if, if, if we were awarded the bid, if you have any sort of complaint, I want to know, because we want our stuff to be absolutely perfect. I'm not just saying that. We take great pride in our work and we want to be absolutely perfect. We want the cemetery to just be, when people drive down that road, bam. That's, that's eye catching, I agree.
Caleb, if we have a problem, could we, could we just exclusively contact you as our singular contact?
Absolutely, absolutely, and I will handle, I will take full responsibility and I will handle everything accordingly, my work. After, I, I will even go this far, after every time the cemetery is mowed, if I am not able to be present, before the workers are allowed to leave, I will single-handedly walk the whole thing and make sure it is required.
Move to go with Chris.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion?
Four of your words, good enough for me, baby.
Thank you. And in your defense, the first year that you had, it was one of the wettest years that we've had.
And, and not, not making excuses, but the first few weeks of April last year, we didn't mow a single property. By the time we got to it, I mean, it's, it's, oh, we just quite catch up all year long, but, uh, you have my word that we will do everything in our power to, to please you guys.
Thank you for your comment. We have a motion on the floor in a second to accept the bid for price center cutting. All over the paper, signify by saying aye. Folks, same sign? Motion carries.
It included the cemetery.
It included, right. It, it, you included both the, uh.
Cemetery.
Yes.
Oh.
The city Masonic Cemetery and the British Cemetery. All right, next thing on your agenda, you'll see is a job description and salary schedule. And I'll turn that meeting over to, uh.
Well, I've already presented that last week. Do you have any further remarks? I have, uh. I sent you the letter that you asked me to write about sixty-five and over, I sent that to everyone. And then I also have for you tonight a, a, a performance review form that we'll be using to review the votes. Anyway, this, this form obviously is, is necessary in order for us to, to go by the job descriptions that I gave you last week. And, uh, so on there, there's mentioned objectives and so forth, uh, toward the end of it. And those objectives, I have, uh, I have written them and am, and, and am ready to sit down with the department heads to go out the objectives for each department. And, uh, so that's part of that form and those, that is done, it's just a matter of a meeting with the department heads and passing the information on.
Can I ask, Sir Tim, I also do plan to do a job critique?
Uh, it depends on performance, we're, we're obviously, I mean, we, we wanna do just once a year to start with. But if we're having, you know, performance issues with somebody, we would meet with them every six months.
I see.
I think that's pretty well standard of, of procedure.
And my only concern is, i- if you had something on your job performance that wasn't up far and you did a semi, then they'd have six months to correct it. And as I understand it, according to our policy and procedure manual, that they will be, uh, that raises, will given on, be given on merit system, rated on this report, am I right?
That's what I understand, yes. That's how they get from step to step.
That's right.
Right, that's how, how that occurs.
And we quantify that with the year served and the ability by which you serve? And how much training you've added to your job skill?
All of those things will be part of what's expected from year to year.
Very good. Question for me?
Any questions? That's really all I have tonight.
None of this is just a, I don't think we need a motion on this, I think we've covered that pretty thoroughly, did we not? Or do we need a motion?
I would think you'd probably be the most to adopt.
I would, I would do a motion to adopt the, what you presented in the last meeting.
The job.
The job descriptions and the performance review matrix.
Sure, with entertaining the motion, it's just time to accept the job descriptions that presented along with the critique. Those job descriptions could be completed on a annual basis, Sam? Yeah, an annual basis could be.
I will, I'll make a motion that we accept the. That we accept the, uh, the document in its entirety.
Seconding. We have a motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none? All over the paper, signify by saying aye.
All right.
Folks, same sign? Motion carries. Next thing on your agenda, we'll move into the assistant supervisor, Chuck Smith.
Quick question before we go into the next discussion, what, what is the implementation date of this report? Uh, Sam, I'd like to know that.
It's the thirteenth of April.
Okay. Thirteen, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Smith.
All right, I don't have a whole lot tonight to handle, like we did last week, so, so there's, there's not been a whole lot going on since, uh. Uh, we've been working on play area, that new play set is, is in place, all we got to do is pour concrete around it and let that set up and we can start laying the fabric and put the big groundlings to work. Well, depends on the weather, we got, we're looking at quite a bit of rain coming over the weekend and first part of the week, so. Uh, just as soon as it dries out enough to get a concrete truck on there, we, we'll get it forward and, and get the fabric laid and haul the rock in. Or, we're really close, the weather cooperates, we can get done pretty quick. We put a tin horn in down there for George Campbell on George Street this week. Uh, then we, from the last board meeting, married asked for a tin horn up here on Steel.
On Steel Street, not my property.
Right, on Steel Street. By the, on the substation.
Right, right.
To, to better access that utility easement.
Right.
Right, so we got that installed this weekend.
Looking at, I noticed that one from George Campbell here on George Street. That, of course, is on a street that is not curving gutter, correct?
Correct.
Looking ahead, um, are we gonna have morning tin horns in some of those areas or on some of those streets where we don't have curving and guttering on them? And if so, um, how practical is it for us to at least start looking into that?
Curving guttering?
Yeah.
Oh, very practical.
Okay. That's something we can do.
Something we should do, yeah. It's not costing money.
Well, yeah. Well, it's too late, you've accepted it, that's the problem with it, you know? And now we've taken them on and we've got the responsibility.
Yeah, we've got a lot of roads in town that, that aren't to our code book standards that we've taken in, that are money pitch right now, and we're just having some consequences.
Well, what I'm saying here is, is this is kind of a, my point is, if the street was curved and gutted, probably would be the need for the tin horn.
Right.
So it's something we probably long rank planning, maybe start looking at, at that. How much to ask in for your, your compensation, I thought?
Absolutely, yes, yeah. Okay. And we have some of those three groups down there too, remember that part of Landlaw, or we'll practice, that cities are not on the way into them.
Right.
Uh, but then they own, evidently the property that's in front of those two new houses that are going up down there. The road is wide enough, the curve, the gutter is fine, but, uh, no way to get into it. Not, not across city property.
Right.
So, uh, and we've looked at that, planning and zoning is looking into that. Uh, to develop a plan to present to the council, that's part of what the planning and zoning is gonna be doing in years to come. It's, uh, giving you a plan, uh, to implement, to make sure that this is not a problem in the city for the next generation coming down the road. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you for your support, Chuck.
Sam, will I turn the floor back over to you again?
Uh, I've done what I've had to do tonight, Harry.
All right.
I've mentioned later.
Thank you for that and I guess it comes down to the mayor's report. And as you know, we've got a, an event coming up on the third of April here, and we'll determine course of city for the next two years. So, uh, so the mayor doesn't have a lot on his plate tonight, except to say that this last year, citizens council. Madam Flurk and Ms. Leslie, uh, Ms. Edward. Distinguished attorneys, all. Uh, it's been a very, uh. Challenging year, picking the words, challenging year. And I think that we've maybe gained some ground. And my wish for you all, wherever the direction this city goes, that it remains on path to all of the precepts that made this city a good place to live in. And look forward to what we can be, because there are opportunities here that many places, cities of our size typically do not have. I think it's well within our grasp to have a, uh, city on this side of the county that the other side of the county looks to and wishes they were more like this one. So, uh, other than that, the mayor doesn't have a lot to address with tonight, so it's all. Pass on then to our city attorneys for that report, Mr. Mike.
Uh, I don't have anything to add other than I will say it's been a pleasure working with, uh, Sam and everybody on, put together that matrix and the JavaScript thing. To the extent I helped on that and put some cake and stuff, it was, it was a fun project, I guess is what I would say. I'm glad we finally got that kind of wrapped up and word proof that, and other than that, I don't think you have to do that.
Good. Any questions or comments, Frank Lynn? All right, we'll move on into the alderman report. Mr. I hate to say it, Mr. Winger?
I don't have anything, Larry.
Did I say it right tonight?
You did. That's right, that's spot on.
Ms. Chris?
I have a question for Scott. Are they doing a ride in the policeman at night?
Uh, occasionally, we have had people that have, uh, done a ride along for them. We do a background check on them, make sure that they have no criminal record. Sometimes it's people that are planning on going through the police academy and wanting to see what we do. So once, once in a while, there's somebody that does, but if they do, before they do, they have to be, uh, background check done, make sure that they're, you know, no criminal history. And they sign a waiver saying that they, they hold the city in no liability if anything happens.
Does that liability insurance cover that?
No, that's what their law, that's what their waiver is for, their waiver says that they won't hold the, the city liable for anything that happens, you know?
If it's a city employee, I suppose they would be covered under our policy, but, uh.
Yeah, we actually don't have any, there's no city employees since, uh, uh, since Steve left that, uh, that had asked a ride along, that I know of.
Right, the, the mayor at Papa Bluff, which is a friend of mine, is also the president of General Baptist World dead horse. And rode around with the police department that evening to see what it was all about. And they did have an incident where a man was attempting to rob a place and, uh, so he really didn't have any weapons, so he took off running. And while the officer radioed back for assistance, the mayor was chasing him.
Well, 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 one of the things on our, one of the, they're not allowing you to get out of the vehicle.
And how I say this, Scott, to look here, that he was chasing him, you were saying, calling out to him, stop, son, stop.
And how I say this, you have to look here, but he was chasing him, and he was saying, calling out to him, "Stop, son, stop."